You're watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 20th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access la port county dot org.
If everyone will join in. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every gain and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our August meeting in our newly renovated town hall. It's kind of exciting to be here in this meeting room.
Yes, it is.
It's been a long time coming, and we're excited to finally be here. First things first, I would like to formally thank the town of Long Beach for allowing us to use their town hall and their council chambers for the months that we were displaced. It was very kind of them to allow us to use their space and no extra charge to our town. So a formal thank you to the town of Long Beach for their kindness and hospitality.
I echo that sentiment.
That said, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the July meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or comments for that one? The only correction I had was that I was not present for that meeting, so if you would add that, that correction's on there.
I'm moved to accept the minutes as presented for the July 16th meeting.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all approved.
Aye.
Can we propose? Motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to review the fund report? Crystal, was there anything that stood out there?
I don't think so.
No more motion.
I'll second it. I have one question, actually. It looks like there's a negative balance in the public safety.
Yeah. Trista explained that last month, actually.
I missed that one.
Cash flow is a short answer. It is a fund that you recall because of the new public safety tax, income tax, which uses monthly distributions. We will have a little bit of discussion later during the budget chat about the overtime because that is part of what's causing the current number that you see, but there's still plenty of time during this year to get that resolved and adjusted. And if it's all right with you, we can talk about it a little bit.
Absolutely. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the fund report? Laura, do you have a motion? Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laura. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we propose? Motion carries. Moving on to payment of the bills.
There's a lot of them.
Not a lot of them.
This is our final, this includes our final payment, doesn't it, or no?
So the final payment isn't, has, it has been taken out? It has not been mailed until the rest of the stuff has been taken care of?
But it is, it is in here, though.
No.
Oh, it's not, okay.
But the majority of it is.
Yeah, I see that.
Why it's not.
Yes.
You'll see two different payments in there. Those are on the. Four.
I move to pay the bills for July 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we propose? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have any correspondence this one?
No.
Moving on to reports. Do we have anything from MS4 that we know of? Dave, Chris, anything from? Chris, then we'll move on to you.
No updates other than been working with the street department, Mr. Baker, and getting working with Linda to finalize his notice. We did discuss because there's timing issues that we have to meet to get that out. Two locations that are weaker part, but should plan on having a, you're going to need to have a special meeting, which at some point, I think you guys were prepared to do anyway, to when presumably there'll be some proposals that are received that will be acceptable that he'll be able to recommend to you for approval before your next meeting so that, I know he's put a lot of effort in and gave me some information that he's been compiling, but anxious, obviously, to make sure that lead collection is secured and moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
And then last, I should give an update on 1929 Cool Spring. I've been in contact with that attorney's office. They have actually done as much as they can in terms of, they are communicating with me and suggested that I send a letter directly to the property and I'll copy them and that will help them along as well. So I'll copy the council, but that communication did come in, at least they're responding.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Ken, how are you down there?
I'm doing well.
Great.
The only thing I have is I talked to Sam Jose, who's managing the project for the CCMG for next year, and he told me that he'd like to get a meeting with whoever you think needs to be in on it for starting the payment assessment and prioritizing which parts of the town you want to include in the project. And he hoped to get a letter out or make contact within the next couple of weeks.
Normally, that would be Dave and sometimes Steve. It's not on that. I think they know the streets better than anyone, so.
I know Dave said he had a list of streets that he has already available.
I'm sure. Somehow, I'm sure he does.
There is a list from the last project we did that, you know, weren't included and that they got.
Got it.
Sent down to the bottom of the list. There's those that could be revisited. I'm sure there's going to be additional ones, and the order that they were prioritized for the last project may change because we've gone through another winter and might have affected a road more than it did another one.
And then I would say Crystal as well, so we can make sure that the budget figures.
Right.
Are worked in there.
Yeah. So Sam will be getting in contact with the town and set up a meeting, hopefully before the next town council meeting.
Okay. Fantastic. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the park department. Please.
All right. So I don't really have a lot of updates currently. We do have, I was going to say, I know we had our centennial festival, so I apologize for not making a meeting last month. We kind of wrapped that up with you guys, but we did unfortunately, as a member of our park board, Melinda resigned. So we are currently looking or need to put out for a new member, if possible. I know that she just, I don't know, I feel like after speaking with my board, I know with the fall festival, I know that was after the centennial festival wrapped up, we kind of talked about maybe doing the fall festival, and I just don't feel like that is something that we have the budget to do with all the updating that we need to do. It's just, it's a lot of work for us as a board, and so I think that this year that we will not be doing the fall festival, just to concentrate on still getting the updates and the things that we need to do as a park board. We do have a meeting with Shannon Eastman, Easton?
Easton.
I was going to say here this next month of the night, to try to just kind of pick her brain to see what we can do as a park board and how she gets her funding, where she, as far as grants, or who she's reaching out to, and just to kind of get how she has her parks updated and what she's doing that we can kind of copy or at least kind of figure out what exactly our objectives are and what's the most important things on that list to like complete. We don't have much in the budget left, I don't believe, I was going to say, and unfortunately, we are still trying to get things updated and things pulled out. So our next meeting is on the ninth, and then we have made a list of things that we need to focus on, but again, until we speak to Shannon, I just kind of want to pick her brain about as far as what she's doing and what things that she thinks that we should also, you know, be the most focused on for right now, just so we can spend our money the best way possible moving forward. But I don't know, I feel like after the centennial festival, I will say that my board was frazzled, I guess, they just didn't feel like we had a lot of support, unfortunately, from the rest of the departments, I would say. I was going to say, it was a long day, the heat, it was so hot that day, but it was just, you know, obviously Laura was there all day with us, so thank you again, Laura. I know Jennifer came out, it was with us, but it just felt like we were hoping to get some more help from more departments out there, so I've got to thank you to Steve and the police department for helping us out that day, too, but it just, I don't know, I feel like they're just, we're having a hard time figuring out what we need to focus on. So I was hoping that maybe if you guys have some ideas about what we, what you guys would like to see us more focused on or objectives that you would like to see us complete before the end of the year, just so I can get them back on board and back and focused on what we need to do. So other than that, I have other updates.
I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I think that's more of a community focus that needs to be asked. I don't think that's something that the council can just answer for you.
Okay.
I know it's something that we as a council maybe can, can help you figure out, but it's not something that I think that we should be deciding by ourselves.
Right, right. We reached out during the centennial festival, we had people come up to the tents, and so we do still have ideas, like a farmer's market, I know that we did get some feedback from the community about what they liked, announced the parks, some things that we need to focus on as far as trails, things like that. But again, we just want to make sure that we are doing our best for the community, but also like we are making sure that we're not overstepping our bounds with you guys as well, and that if there's things that you guys, you know, feel that are in precedence, that those are the things that we're putting first on our objectives and our schedules as well. So I just, I don't know, this is my first time being president, and so it's just, I feel like we are trying to keep it together, we're trying to do the things that we need to do. Unfortunately, I don't have a million dollars in my budget to get all the park equipment out at the same time. We do have things lined up that we're looking at, but we just, I don't know, we just want to make sure that we are doing our jobs the best by our ability.
And so when is your next meeting?
Our meeting is Monday, the ninth, at 5:30.
Okay. And so if you remember, last year, and then the beginning of this year, you used your entire budget.
Right.
All of your capital, it was used to upgrade the swing set, so there really is no budget left.
Right.
That you guys have.
Right.
There's, everything that's left right now is pretty much for maintenance and repairs.
We, they never stand that, which is why the fall festival, we decided to just not, that's just not something that we can do, as much as we would love to for the community, I know.
Right.
You know, the town really loved what we did last year, but we just want to make sure because we know that all this equipment has to be updated to ADA, that, you know, obviously we like more community events, but we want to make sure that we're not focusing purely on just events, that we are actually doing what we can for the parks.
Right. So pretty much everything that you guys have left this year is, again, for maintenance and supplies, it looks like, and then for repairs that might have to be done. So as much as I would like to tell you to go ahead and do all kinds of things and survey everyone and do all the things, I don't, I think you guys kind of overspent.
Unfortunately, we did overspend, and we, I feel like the weather had been more on our side, it was a, I mean, it was just a really, really hot day, and I know a lot of people were like, oh, it would come, but it's too hot. Things happen. I mean, I think that what we did was, I mean, I know that I worked my butt off, I know my board worked their butts off. I appreciate everybody who did come out and support us that day. Unfortunately, I picked the hottest day, apparently, but I appreciate what you know everything that you guys did support.
And your meeting the ninth, and where is it at?
It will be here.
The ninth here?
For a lively use of room.
What time?
We have 5:30, and Shannon will be there just to kind of, so again, just so we can get some ideas as far as what we can do and what, you know, any fundraising or anything that we can do that might help us out, just so we are in better position for next year because I know that this equipment needs to be updated per the state.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And then again, just we need to put out for a new member because I am down to four.
Okay. Chris, remind me, please, about notice for those meetings required or not?
Yes. Yes, at least 48 hours in advance, unless there's exigent circumstances, but in that counting weekends. Now redo one more since we're coming out into the year, just as a reminder, if you set your meetings, you're allowed to just publish them at the beginning of the year and provide them in a newspaper, then you don't have to do it continually.
All right, thank you. Hi, Steve.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, glad to be in our new building.
As are we. Do you have any updates for us tonight?
Just that it's roof season, obviously, as everybody.
We hadn't noticed.
I've been busy with that, but other than that, everything's good.
Like tulips sprouting around town. So other than roof season, anything, no other updates for us?
The only thing, Warren asked me to come down here to possibly answer a question, and it's about this door right through here. I've gotten, I put out for a couple prices, I got one back. It's for $800.
Okay. Is that to install it or to?
That's for the door, the hinges, and the handle.
Okay, because we have a door.
Which will not fit that opening.
Ah, okay. So.
The door that you have is about four to six inches too short, and the hinge pockets don't line up because it came with its own frame.
Okay.
So the idea is we want to keep that frame just to keep costs down.
Okay.
So I'm waiting for the second cost or price to come in, and as soon as I get that, I'll text the board or let Warren know, and we can go from there.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
So as far as labor to install it, it's probably going to be roughly $100.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on. Anything for planning and zoning? Our police department will be up next.
Good evening. I've got two quick things. 203 Johnson Road, if I can make contact with the buyer of that property that owns the property, and they did clean it up over the weekend, and I'm told that they will stay on top of it, and stalking Chris for the meeting, and they did have some sort of a open house for potential buyers on Sunday. He said the people were there, that's what I was told was going to happen. So we'll stay on top of that, make sure that property stays clean and up to date. Secondly, I just want to give a thanks, a huge thanks to Chief Corley, the Michigan City Police Department. On August 6th, they held a national night out, which is a community event. They invited all the agencies in La Porte County to participate, and we definitely showed up. We had a car out there, gave out our drawstring bags, made some contacts with some great people, and we had a wonderful time. So looking forward to next year's event, and again, huge thank you to Chief Corley for thanking us. That's all I've got.
That's it.
You guys have anything for me?
I do.
Go ahead.
The last two months, we haven't gotten summaries.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we, we always had how many stops and how much the gas costs per car and all that.
Yeah, I submit that, I don't know why, I submit all the reports.
I didn't get anything today.
It was emailed.
Yeah, I didn't receive anything.
Okay.
Yeah, because usually we have them at the meetings, we haven't had July's or August's.
Yeah, I submit them every month.
Okay, okay. And you send it to Chris, townhall@trailcreek.
Of course.
Okay, to Chris, okay, all right. You'll find it.
Okay.
I just look at them.
That's all, that's absolutely, I hope so.
I'm a nervous person, I like looking.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
That's it. Thank you for your support, I always appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
To start, we left off as far as my report this one. It sounds like everybody's on the dot gov.
We are.
Yes.
So we'll go to that in a minute.
I'm still on the old at the moment, I think I sent Sheriff's text, I'll send another one as far as getting that sent back.
Oh, you didn't get in?
Well, I was out of town on that particular, again, too, but yeah, so I need to get that squared away. I was waiting anyway because we've not, some other stuff with Chris, which she already mentioned and everything, so that, that account.
You can, we're still using the trail creek dot com?
Right.
Yeah.
Email, so you can send it to that if you have it.
Okay.
You do that.
So I'm using a couple others on the lead thing, which you mentioned earlier. On the road issues and everything, I was talking to you about that. Yeah, I've got a little list, I don't have measurements yet, I can get with you as soon as I do this part, but we're thinking, and then let you guys have that and see what's going on.
Yeah, Sam will want to have all that information probably when.
Yep, Sam had a handful of things to get out there and do that, but the listing, I think, so we'll be good to go on that. Yeah, for once, we already put five tons of home patch down this season, so.
That's a lot.
Various areas, and those are going to be there, you're going to see on that list, so for the most part, probably going to need more for the beginning of the fall. One of the things I have is our, the signs I mentioned, or I've had the reports before, we have six of the new welcome signs put out on all the previously existing locations. I do have one more left, I don't know where exactly we want it. It was brought up at Risky, I don't know how we're going to do that at Risky in the Boulevard right there, I'm not sure, because on that, where that would work out there, but idea is whatever, let me know, because I don't want that sold on board. We keep it as a spare because we were about that close, Johnson and 20, the last week, the tree that came down.
I think maybe we could put that as a spare.
I think that'd be a good idea.
It might be a good idea.
So, no, I agree, Mike and I don't know, so we were lucky there. Other things I have.
Let's hold on to that one.
What's that?
Let's hold on to that one as a spare, just in case.
Store it safely.
Okay, good.
The other things I have was boulders that Warren's set up there at Wolfwell.
Did an excellent job.
We're finally moved and placed, and we wrestled in place, if you will.
Yes.
But, and then, of course, town hall is open, a lot of work to ask, thanks to everybody personally, and that's my guys, Steve, everybody, those guys, together, get a lot of things moved over here, put back in place, so, sort of that.
Mrs. Carter, I think I emailed, emailed her, texted her, by that she feels safe now with the boulders that she has.
Actually, so. No questions?
No, thank you for all the work you guys have done, and I know it's been a lot this month, so.
It's busy.
Extremely. Anything for Mercy this month?
Just that we are, commissioner's meeting is next month on the 19th.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to old business, which includes the town hall remodel.
We have the last. I believe this is also passed up, but this, the final, final. Of the renovation we had, which was included with change orders, did you see all this?
Yeah. Yes, we, we've printed a check for that, we're just waiting for the final to come in.
We got the change order, and then the final bill, it comes out with $367,006.57. And they are coming in tomorrow morning at 7:00 to fix that, I think, and the.
Is that their last thing other than?
That's it. That'll be it?
I don't think they'll, the other things that they'll finish for us, so, okay.
What's that?
They're not, because they won't, they're not changing out the door, the cabinets just kind of have to loosen up, I think, over time, so.
Yeah, don't worry about that. And the landscaping out back, that is scheduled for September by Dan, so take care of that with the little problem we have back there.
How far out in December?
I don't have the exact date, but you've got it.
Can we yell him down for you in a second?
I'm sure.
Because that would be helpful.
You need a, you got a party?
I might. I might.
Well, it's likely weather permitting, too.
Yeah. We'd like to get the rededication done before December.
I'd also like to get it done sooner rather than later. Okay. So that's, is that, that's our update for the remodel. So we can move on to the town website, then.
Okay, well, there's two things, the town email and the website. So the email, I've got everyone created, Chris says we have to port the old emails over, I'm having a struggle with that. It's been advanced to a Google administrator.
I actually did mine, I was able to do it.
How, how were you able to?
I, I would have to go through it step by step.
Really?
But I was able to actually port my, or actually move my emails from the other account into my Google account.
Wow.
And they all populated.
See, and you did yours personally.
I did.
Whereas I'm trying to do it from the administration console, maybe I'll try that.
Yep.
Okay, so yours.
It was, it was super easy, yeah.
Only, I, I mentioned before, when I left Comcast, which I was a source of, it was really easy for me to port them over to my Gmail, was really easy, but I've been trying through the administrative console, maybe I'll just sign in and try it that way.
Yeah, I just looked it up, I followed the directions, and it worked flawlessly, so.
Well, I've, I've been even, the Google people that I'm working with, they walked me through it, and we still got a failure, with the same error every time, and they go, oh, you're, we're going to create a support ticket. So that's on hold, but we know we have to do that. But then the website, I had a meeting today, and the person that I'm dealing with, she is, she's on sick leave through this week, and I'm on vacation next week, but the week of Labor Day, we're going to have a meeting, sign off on it, and they'll start creating, there's no cost to us till 2032 because of the state. And then I'll just run it in the background and show a demo, and when we make it live, the other one goes away. And initially, it will just be like the old one with any additions that we want, so that's it.
Okay, fantastic.
And I'll keep you posted, and I'll send you links when I get the trial version.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the budget process update. And Trista, I believe that's you.
Yeah. We had a productive workshop last week. Passed out the major backup documents, having for appropriation revenue through June 30th, which is the best place budget-wise than to consider that it's half of a year predicting for the half of the rest of the year, and then all of the following year. Went through potential budget numbers at that workshop and talked them about the process moving forward. Obviously, this meeting in August, I would like to look through a few numbers, depending on how much time that you all have for this evening, and maybe we start a little bit and then could kick it off to the end of the meeting to see, see what everyone's appetite is yet for the rest of the night. You'll recall that the September meeting is set for the first reading, which includes the public hearing, and 10 days prior to that, we have to have the notice released through Gateway. Most of the information is populated in Gateway now, outside of whatever kind of edits you might want to make to the budget proposals, so that part will be very easy, we have to release that 10 days prior to the meeting. So really, within the next two weeks, you'll need to make sure to be ready to focus into the budget, final totals. But you're in pretty good shape, and I'll explain that when we're ready to get into the detail. And in pretty good shape really for all the funds, which is good news. That's based a little bit on some underspending. Last year, some increase in revenues, the roofs have aided in your increased revenue to the general fund because of increased permits, so as much as we don't like the almost tornadoes, it has been a little bit helpful in that regard. Not that we want that on the homeowner's backs, but a little bit of silver lining, I suppose. October, then, is when you will make your final vote on the budget, but that does not include a public hearing by law, up to you whether you hear any more comments from public members at that time. From there, then, you'll recall the D L. From there then, you'll recall the DLGF uses October, excuse me, November and beginning of December to review. Presuming that no other unit in the county is passing any debt, issuing any bonds at the end of the month of December. We usually will get your budget order, the initial notice that they send, the middle to end of December. Make sure that they have approved everything, which if we're passing a balanced budget, which is my hope, that approval is pretty perfunctory. They won't get into the nuts and bolts of you should have spent five dollars or ten dollars here and there. They're looking at your total fund balances. Will you have cash left at the end? Which is what I'm here to help you make sure that we do. And when I said earlier, it's in pretty good shape, it's from making that analysis already. They'll send that notice on if for some reason they can't do it by the end of somewhere. They do it very early January and then you're off and running then with your new budget for the next year. At a minimum, I'd like to go through tonight and point out a couple areas that might need a little bit more thought. Show you what your, the totals are currently listed. For the most part, the budget's pretty steady level compared to this year twenty twenty-four. But for a few increases in a few places, I'll point out when you're ready to go through that. So that's up to you.
If you're ready then.
Yeah, okay, then let's do it. Can you pass those down, please? There's. Sorry, I think there's six. Oh, yeah. All right, so what I've just passed out is what the DLGF, and it's not at the top of this, but the DLGF calls it the Form One. Department of Local Government Finance, the part of the government that reviews the budgets and the state government for each of the local units and make sure that everyone's going to have cash for what they want to spend. Your copy is called expenditures because that's what we all think of them as. So these first three pages, first of all, important to note, the date at the bottom for today, August twentieth. Your copy that we looked at last week had a different date. So that should be the first place that you can tell you have the most updated copy. The first three pages are the general fund and generally, the red colored boxes, that fricky color, are notations for Chris and I to make some edits either in the Gateway system, how maybe a line item is recorded or possibly how something is recorded in Keystone. So that's not anything that you need to concern about today. The purple boxes, we will discuss briefly, that you see in the column titled twenty twenty-four budget. We'll go through those briefly tonight. And then the yellow boxes are ones that I wanted to show that we highlight and discuss. One thing that you'll note that is probably on everybody's mind is can we afford a raise? This copy does include a three percent raise for your full-time employees. I'll point that out as we go along. It will ultimately be up to you to decide if you can and should afford that or not. And if that is the value that you want to end up using as opposed to, you know, two or four, whatever. So you see in the clerk treasurer line and the clerk treasurer deputy line at the top is the example. The twenty twenty-four budget has a number listed in each of them. You see the twenty-five budget is the proposal, that's slightly higher. That is the three percent difference. And then the column off to the very, very right, twenty-four versus twenty-five difference is again, just a note to help you quickly identify where in the budget things have changed.
Got it.
So that first value at the top of that far right column is that three percent increase difference. The travel training is reduced slightly then, considering that the first year of a clerk treasurer's, four years, there's usually additional training in January for the newly elected officials. So that will not be needed moving forward. There certainly is still training that is helpful from the DLGF and from AIM, which is the Association of Indian Municipalities that provide helpful training sessions throughout the year. Many of them now are also virtual through Teams or Zoom or what have you. And so that does help save on some of the transportation and hotel lodging costs. You'll note that in the middle there, perf is the first line into, and I should point out for a few that weren't here last week, the dark green line is the title of the department. It's at the bottom. So everything you see above that dark green line relates to that department heading. So the bottom half of this first page is the city council, part of the general fund. And that very first line is for perf. You see there's an increase there, which of course will be due to the raises. There's additional perf that's contributed then because of that. The next two lines relate to the health insurance. And what I want to point out in that purple shade, if it came through on your photocopy in the twenty-four budget, is that as I was preparing some of this in the last couple of weeks, I noticed that the values entered in Keystone for this year's twenty twenty-four budget weren't matching what had been passed by council last year during the budget process. The Keystone value was listed at six hundred twenty-five thousand approximately, a little bit less than that. And the budget that you passed was seven hundred. So this purple box that is, is an example of an adjustment that I added in the Keystone to match what you all passed last year. Not exactly sure why the Keystone entry was different. There are some year-end duties in Keystone that you have to click through to pull in the new budget. The new budget has to be entered. So not exactly sure of the timing on how I knew that happened, but the point is that it's fixed. And the numbers that you have here and the numbers that you see, which is part of why I brought that and gave it to you today. The appropriation report today that you don't normally have at your meetings include the adjustments. So if you look at that page, and I think it's on page one, in the second section, you'll see the additional ADDL slash ADJ, additional adjustment column on your appropriation report, which is this, this report. You'll see forty-two thousand in that additional adjustment. So that's the amount that's added into Keystone.
In the second, yeah.
Based on the approval that you paid last year. That will of course, change the remaining balance at the end of the year. And so a few of the line items that were concerning to me that looked like they were overspending actually are right on track. It's just that the budget that was still in Keystone wasn't quite right.
Okay.
So it's fixed now.
That's good.
So the couple of places you see the purple, that's what that's about. And it will match up then to your appropriation report for those same line items if you wanted to see what the difference was.
That's okay.
So for next year, making sure that we use the right Keystone line item, you'll see on our, back on our expenditure packet here, one hundred fifty-five thousand six eighty listed for health insurance. On this packet today, that's a twelve percent increase from last year, while this year's budget. Typically, your health insurance buyers will say at this stage of the year, well, we think it might be a eight, nine, ten, twelve percent increase. As you know, we've got to get that nailed down over the next really month and a half. See if anyone else has better rates, see how you compare the plans. And I wanted to make sure that in your budget advertisement, that you're highly, meaning a higher end approximate number. Hopefully, we can cut that back as it gets closer. I definitely would not want to suggest to you whether raises would work without factoring in the highest end of costs that you're going to have to pay in, so it was important to note that today. The social security is in yellow simply because you have always paid social security, but you'll see it was down below in a different line item, number three ninety-five. And that really should be a one hundred number. So it's just simply, that's just a movement to make sure that it complies with occurring in the payroll section and just being organized a little bit better. The value ultimately simply is increased because of the three percent proposed raises. Moving on to page two. Oh, I'm sorry, the rest of the town hall budget is pretty similar. I did do a ten percent increase on the workers' comp insurance, which is the top of the bottom section. Ten percent right now, again, just based kind of on early estimates and hopefully that will be less as you get closer. Page two, not a lot of difference. You'll see most everything is pretty level. I did increase a little bit in the attorney professional services line. Typically, those contracts do increase a little bit each year. I didn't ask Chris specifically what he thought he might try to charge you next year, but added a little bit that I think might be reasonable. And he can look at the budget and see if that will work and let us know as he gets ready to do his contract. Assuming he's going to be still in contract. And then the two yellow boxes are simply because there were two different places in your approval from last year that covered MS four. You only need one and we need to make sure it's in the contractual area organizationally. Last year, it happened to be that there ended up being two places that were approved. And so that's simply why you see some numbers there. I think that the five thousand I listed should more than cover what you've needed. I don't know that you've done an MS four ordinance yet.
It's in the works, yeah.
Yeah. So even though you have not spent in the last four years anything close to five thousand, there might be some compensation with that, I didn't know. Now it's budget a little bit higher than what you probably need.
We need to pull our, our last, our last invoice from Bullwood Engineering to see what they charged us to find out what, what their engineering fees would be again for that.
Relating to the ordinance for, for the compliance.
To MS four because they do our compliance program.
And there was discussion about implementation of the fee.
To help, to help offset that.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll follow up.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
If you would.
And a stormwater fee can be added at any time during the year. But it doesn't have to be on the same time limit, the same timeline as your budget timeline.
I think really if, if we did, instead of having it as Kate Doyle, if we just listed it as MS four quarterly.
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't put the word coloring there, but yes, that's, that's already planned. I know she's a prior. Okay, page three. At the top here is the police department's budget. You'll note the same three percent raises there, just to be clear. You'll note also the notation in the top marshal spot that it will be paid again in the public safety fund. And we'll get to that in a few minutes. And then I thought it was important to specifically list the longevity. I think I have this a tad high, though it might be a hundred or two less. But again, to keep track of, you know, that it's paid and make sure that it's specifically in the budget and not just maybe shoved into the payroll line also. I think it would be good to keep this listed separately, similar to your other benefits, perf, the social security that you pay on their behalf, that kind of thing. Healthcare, you know, it's all separate. I suggest, as you'll see in a few minutes, that the gas is again paid in the public safety as well as a small line for repairs and equipment. The rest of that budget is relatively level. The, and I can talk with Steve a little bit later and update him, but. The community events was one of the areas as well as the police clothing that the Keystone listed budget prior to last week was different than what you had approved. So the numbers that you see there in purple there, the two five thousand numbers are what you approved. Currently, and I'm going to take a moment to switch to this for just a second. Currently, the spending line for the police supplies prior to me entering these edits in Keystone was overspent by two thousand dollars. The community events line that was listed had not been spent at all. So one thing that we do need to make sure that all department heads are doing, and I made my soapbox for just a minute, is we need to verify the checks and balance procedure. So as a department head has a bill to pay, other than maybe the NIPS go to the phone that come directly just to City Hall or Town Hall, excuse me, all the other bills that you want paid, you really should be going through the appropriation report and listing the line item that you want to use. That way you get to make the choice and you can look at your budget and see what's there. We also can make sure to give you, if you don't have copies already, a monthly copy of the report after checks are, are adjusted, so that you see your balances that are left. From there then, it's the clerk's office job to proofread the number that you selected to make sure that, yes, there is still balance left like you thought. And then they're not making the decision for you where it comes from too. So those couple of things are important. The gasoline bill, obviously, you know, that may come just to Town Hall directly. But some of these other, the supply and repair type lines, make sure that you guys are writing down the number on the bill when you send it or include it in your email, so it can be pulled with the APB. The state board will look at that in their audits as well to make sure that the department heads are first approving where they want to spend their money from and that the clerk's office then is simply verifying it. So having that initial notation is important from, from the department.
Just to kind of interrupt for a second, is there chief, something available from state board of accounts? Because I think, I agree that that's the way that it is. Once the budget's set, that, for instance, chief where, you know, Tim get to choose, right? The money's there, they get to spend it. Man, I'm always going to do that. I just said it right in front of me. Dave, sorry. So that they get to, they get to choose where that goes, right? But I, I don't know that that has always been the case, where they come and ask the council still for permission versus those just being approved.
Thank you, because I actually was just going to say the same thing.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a little bit of a pivot and I think getting used to so that everybody, you know, chief might be more experienced than David or others, but so that it, it helps out and, you know, especially new clerk too.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And I will say really quickly, it's not uncommon in smaller towns that that's it, that they just submit the bill and the clerk takes care of it. Happens a lot. And unfortunately, there's probably some bigger cities that happens in too, but. So it's not uncommon that that's happened, but we do want to make sure that, especially having this last audit, hopefully, I mean, whatever they finally tell us, but hopefully finally finish up, that this year, we're starting kind of fresh with that. Fixing up little places here we can. Everybody, personal life, you know, professional life, there's always places to improve. And so that's what we're here to try to help with is each, each year, hopefully, let's tackle something new and get a few, a few things a little bit better ordered. So that is one suggestion that I do have. I know for you all to be able to make your best decisions, you have to see copies of the appropriation report. And so we'll talk about the best way to do that. Because for you to have to call or stop in every time you want to pay something, that doesn't help. So there has to be some good flow of information that way. And having copies available will be good. Okay. So I don't know that you need the full five thousand in community events for next year. It's not the one hundred anniversary, but that's not my decision to make. Right now, I listed because that's what it was. I'm sorry, in the twenty-four budget, you see the five thousand. Excuse me. Let me look at the proper column. Twenty-five budget, I did reduce the community events. Whether that number is sufficient or not will be obviously for conversation with you and the chief moving forward. So that's the police department. Parks and Rec is consistent budget to this year listed. When you look at your appropriation report to see how the spending has gone, you'll see that several of the lines there are overspent. Some are still a bit underspent. The good news about all of it is that in the general fund, sixteen thousand five hundred we funded. Almost fifteen thousand has been spent. There's one thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars left unspent in the general fund for the parks. Excuse me, part of your transfer resolution tonight is fixing the negative items that you see. Whether next year's budget needs to change based on what was spent this year. Again, that's more a conversation for, for you and your parks department, you know, your park board people. As long as the total remains the same, we can adjust the line item values as we need to. So that's, this is the type of area where I want you to have the information tonight. You all can think about it and talk about it. You all can think about it and talk about it between now and the September meeting. When we advertise it in Gateway, we could use these numbers, but we have time and room to make the edits after that September meeting before you vote in October. We just can't increase the total. We can change around the lines here and there, but the total, the 16-5 total would need to stay the same. Okay, on to page four. Most of this page is the motor vehicle highway fund. Obviously, you know that you have some employees that you pay from there, as well as that supplies and things for the activities. I do wanna point out the very top line. Again, you'll note that the 3% raises listed there. Now, I was under the impression that you had one full-time person and then maybe a part-timer, two helper. Chris will verify that for me today. So whether this raise should apply or not, you'll have to decide. You know, usually, if you do one part-time, it's gotta be everybody, so this might be a spot that I shouldn't have listed how I did. But the orange is there because so far this year, you spent $31,500 and only a budget of the 47. So we're well past half of your budget, and it's only in August. Of course, every time there's plowing for the snow, we expect that pay will be more. But keep this in mind, and as we move forward into end of September, beginning of October, we're gonna have to figure out if what is left in that budget is appropriate, if we have to do an additional appropriation, if we need to maybe transfer some money around somewhere differently from some unused lines. But I didn't want it to get down to zero left and then bring it up to you, so it's something to look at. Maybe next year's budget does need to be higher, not for raise purposes as part-time people, but just because of general expenses. It's always hard to predict the weather. You know, along with the roughs with the storm came down branches, too, so it's all, a lot of their job, of course, is related, weather events that we can't predict. Whether or not the gas line should be increased, I guess that maybe should be part of conversation, but right now, there hasn't been a lot spent from it, which is a little bit odd to me. So I think we need to double-check that.
That's gonna be in the stack.
You'll note the bottom of the motor vehicle highway fund, on the far, well, where the orange box is, toward the bottom. That was just to double-check some expenditure that has happened, which is related to coal patching, which is perfectly fine. This motor vehicle restricted fund, if you remember, the state legislature mandated that you split your gas tax in half. Half goes to motor vehicle regular fund, use it how you want to, and then half has to be in the restricted fund, which is specifically for road repair and maintenance, not simply snow plowing and day-to-day operational expenses. You traditionally do budget some money down there. I've listed the 40,000 again, expecting that there will be some road projects that you want to do, that I'll circle back to in a moment, on how much maybe that you could afford. And so that's kind of a placeholder until we see develops. The local road street fund likewise, typically budget a little bit in there. Again, held for road projects, not simply just the filling of potholes here and there. So that will be ready in case you choose to do it. Page five. The top is your law enforcement education, continuing education fund. So far this year, it's, and it's in yellow, because so far this year, it's been used twice for some training. The total cost of those two things, though, was more than the 4,000 we budgeted. I did look at it to verify that there wasn't something else paid there, maybe that shouldn't have been. The two expenses are fine. So I think later in the year, while we maybe, while we maybe should-
Question for you, though, but those were the CMT trainings, if I remember correctly.
They're reimbursed.
Those were reimbursed.
They are. They are. And it's a little bit of gray area in the law on whether, on, let me say, the state board of accounts guidance, and maybe Chris has some extra information legally, but of course, because of reimbursement, you're allowed to spend it. The gray area is whether your budget has to be high enough, meaning, do we need to do an additional appropriation to simply cover this extra money that was spent? Or because it was reimbursement, can we just leave the budget however it is? And because it was reimbursement, then it's fine that it would be a negative line item.
Because it should balance at the end.
It should balance at the end.
Yeah, so it's not a problem that it was spent, but I do think that maybe for the 25 budget, we should look at a little bit higher budget than the 4, just so that there's no need later.
But the CIT won't be repeated.
Right.
But there's other training that typically happens.
Right, but those would be the same trainings that we normally would schedule. There shouldn't be an additional fee like CIT wise.
So my question really quickly legally is, a donation, if it's specifically listed what the donation's for, I believe that you wouldn't have to do an appropriation technically. Most places often would anyway, just to be consistent, but what about the reimbursement, though? Does that, if something like this was spent, which is reimbursed for, do we still have to stay within an appropriation value?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. It's a little more gray, I think. So I think later in the year, we should include this, if we have any other additional appropriations, just do one big one, advertise one time. Technically, we shouldn't be spending any lines in the negative, however, the state board honestly really looks at the fund. This fund is perfectly fine. There's enough cash there to cover it. So I've got on the list, and we'll circle back maybe in the October meeting and do any other additionals. By that point, you should have a better idea with the MVH hours, if you're gonna need additional money to spend for that, and so we could just do one additional and cover a couple of things at once. Should we increase that budget for next year, then, do you think? Or no?
I don't think so.
I mean, in '23, you only spent 2,500.
I didn't think so either, too.
Okay, all right, good. Casino Riverboat, again, we try to budget it according to the revenues that we think you're going to actually receive. The major bulk of that expenditure, as you probably know, is the 75,000 that you spend for your fire coverage with your contract with Cool Spring. This year, you did budget an additional 25,000 for other capital if the need arose, which so far has not. But next year, I went back to the plan of covering just the fire contract and let your CETA balance build a little bit, knowing though that there's some cash there, if you did have some kind of capital emergency that came up, that you could dip into that a little bit. Lit Public Safety, you'll note that the line for part-time overtime is proposed to be empty for next year, which is because I put it in the general fund still.
So it's in the first page.
I do think we should discuss the value of that and whether the 16-5 will be high enough or not. You'll note that the-
Part-time and overtime is 16-5, high enough?
That's harsh. It's split between two parts.
Okay.
I don't believe it was enough. It was supposed to go back up to 40,000 this year.
Okay, so for '24, we have 16-5 in general and 16-5 in lit. Let me pause, circle back to that in just a moment, if you might allow me to do so. In the budget for lit next year, you'll see the raises accounted for, for the marshal spot, and that is 3% increase over the current year's salary ordinance. The budget that was passed last year had an extra $1,000 in it compared to the salary ordinance, and so it is listed for 25 in the correct fashion. The gas is listed there, is an increase from this year, because it will be needed, and then repairs and equipment are there to fill out the total revenue. You'll get, you should have at least next year, 118,800 in lit revenue. Your budget here is coming under that by 1,000. And I need to double-check, but I think next year will kick in the May supplement that you will get as well. We don't ever wanna plan and budget for that supplement, because we never know exactly what it's gonna be, which is why your budget currently is listed at 117. But if that, that does kick in next year, I just forget if it's the second or third year that that's received, the cash is there, and then you can budget it the following year, once you actually have it and actually know how much it will be. So I am comfortable that the budget listed in the lit funds will be covered by the revenue that you're receiving. The bottom two on that page are restricted and unrestricted funds. You might recall that that is some of the money that the state settled on your behalf with big pharma companies.
Yep.
You receive a little tiny bit each year. I didn't put budget in it for right now, because you really, you haven't developed a plan yet on how to spend it. A lot of places are buying Narcan for their officers for this fund. Your amount's really tiny, and-
Mine was also so small that it goes right back to the county.
No, it comes into you.
I thought it was allocated that it became so small.
I think there was, I think there was over, like, the early payment that was too high or something, they had to fix it. I think it was whatever it was.
It had to go back.
And- This is the 15-year. And that may have been maybe the restricted funds, but the unrestricted, you wrote on whopping 1,182, I think that's sense.
Okay.
So it's not enough, and we know the 15-year, it's kind of a roller coaster on how much you'll receive. It's not enough to plan a new program of any kind.
How much is it to restock your Narcan? I'm actually doing that tomorrow.
There we go.
You're just talking about that.
Well, we do our first aid kits, bigger kits, so I don't know if we can use it for that.
No, we'll have to check. There were some regulations that they put out with what you can spend it on because of this whole sunburn thing, so at the time that you're ready to start to think about that, we can look. If a need arises, unfortunately, it's not enough to pay, you know, some social work time or something like that, which a lot of us are doing. So we can circle back and double-check that when you're ready. And that's why I've spent it at zero right now, because, all right, page six, and we're getting to the end. Rescue plan, there's a value listed there right now, only because until you spend the rest of it down, the final remodel bills, we still need to plan to spend the rest of it, but that number will be adjusted as you move through the next month or so and get that wrapped up. From there, if you do have anything left, of course, you might have some final things to do around here. After that, it just has to be spent on any governmental purpose, which you know already. And just a quick reminder, by the end of this year, you have to have planned what you're going to spend it on, which if you spend it on any governmental purpose, you're already planned, and then spent down completely by the end of '26. So I think you won't have a lot left come December, but we'll make that just as we go. CCI toward the bottom half, your cigarette tax comes in. It has dwindled, of course, over the years. The amounts listed there are in coordination with the revenue that I expect you to receive, and a little bit available then for any capital that may come up during the year as well, based on the cash that you currently have. If you don't spend much this year, of course, there's more cash available next year. Right now, it's spent on your phone services, which is typical, that kind of technology for this fund. And you should come close to ending the year, probably spending, remember, these are June numbers, the 13,000 or 14,000 that's listed there in the budget. Well, that, your CCD funds, remember that that's a special, a separate property tax outside of your levy. Right now, I do wanna mention just quickly that the maximum that you can request there is five cents per $100 of assessed value, so people's property. Your current rate is .0448. Based on your proposed AV, if you were to go through the process that's due by April, and you don't have to decide this now unnecessarily, but based on that small increase from .0448 up to .05, so it's like half of a cent, you could earn a whopping extra $4,600 next year. But in relation to the fact that your income from it's about 35, it's not necessarily a drop in the bucket. It's a pretty simple process, takes a couple hearings. We have forms already in place that we plug in your particulars to, so there's not a lot of cost to it. Ultimately, you'd have a couple hearings early next year, February, March. We send it to the DLGF, they approve it for you, and then that rate goes into effect the following year. So it's something to consider. As your assessed value grows, the amount that you could be earning, that you're missing out on will grow, you know, that little incremental bit. So 4,500, $5,000 to the CCD fund would go toward capital if you choose to make that change. Wouldn't be a big effect to your homeowners, but certainly some. And if you want to consider that, then early next year, we can run just a couple quick little numbers to say, if a home is valued at such and such value, then if you increase this to the five cents, this is how much extra they would pay. That way, you would have good solid information behind you to make that decision. So because of the revenue coming in being right about 35,000, we need to make sure we budget appropriately. In the past, we had spent a little more from that fund because the cash had been building, the cash balance. You might recall a year, several, several years ago, where we used it to help supplement the health insurance cost that year. But right now, what you see then, for the police capital, goes to the police card leases that are outstanding, as well as then still the next 5,000 listed. You always try to assign some for park capital improvements, and so that was the next place to keep. Seeing that the clerk's office then is listed at zero, and then just general other capital listed at zero as well. But we've gotta pick and choose based on the revenue that you receive. You can certainly, if Park didn't need it, you can reassign it somewhere else that does need it, but that's how it is for now. Then the last page, top of seven, is your fire contract under the CETA budget, as well as some extra revenue coming in for another 25,000 in capital. That can help replace what you may not have available to CCD fund, and so budget is there available for you. Major moves, you still have a balance of 29,305 in the fund, so that is listed there again in case you decide to spend on a project. Community crossings right now is not budgeted, but we can talk about that in just a moment. And then the bottom is your refuse fund. I wasn't sure if the total contract might be increasing or decreasing, so it's in yellow toward the bottom. Again, I did list the social security and perf up in the employment payroll section, so that it's organized the same place, as well making sure that the payroll that's paid from the fund, then the social and perf are covered from the same fund. Right now, I believe that you have social and perf covered out of the general fund, and that was planned back a couple years ago based on revenues and balances and so on and so forth, but I think you can move it over here now and keep everything organized in one place. And for what it matters, a little bit of relief off of the general fund is always a good thing. And the last line got cut off of this copy at the very bottom, but in total, oh no, I only did it for the general fund, maybe let me look really quickly. I apologize. Nope, it's fine. What I did wanna point out, the bottom of the general fund that I forgot, the bottom of page three, you'll see over on the right column a 3.30%.
Yes.
So the budget is a 3.3% increase over this year's budget. Now, when I suggested that the 3% raises are probably doable, this is why, because this is the difference from one year to the next. Remember, please, that your property tax levy- Remember, please, that your property tax levy, the levy, the part that the DLGF says will increase for you for this coming year, 25 is 4% increase. So obviously, 3.3 is less than 4. But also recall, please, that your revenue to the general fund, the property tax is only a portion. So we can't say that all of your revenue will jump by 4%. But enough of it, based on that property tax, will jump that I think the 3.3% increase is doable. As well, right now, your insurances are budgeted high. So hopefully, those numbers come down a little bit, which will leave some other room for other expenses.
I was going to ask him about that.
Yeah. Part then of the gateway system is to run a different form. Once we get the estimates put in for expenditures, the estimates put in for revenues, we run a form that looks like this. It's basically a populator. I made a copy for you because it's a lot more numbers and junk. What I'll tell you is, what I said earlier, that I think this proposed budget is in pretty good order. It's because of evaluating, you see the green spots here, each of your funds, and the green means you have cash.
Yes.
So the end, they always look at the end of this year, are you going to be a green, good cash balance the end of '24?
Is it a green or red year?
Right. Right now, it's a green year. And then the end of '25, are you still going to be green? As long as you're green, and their system, it shows literally green and red. I like this because they don't pre-color it.
Got it.
Now, all they're going to do is look at, are you balanced? Do you have cash up at the end? That's what they do with their approvals. Do we predict the revenues in line with what they might think generally? They're not super picky, and if you're green, you're good. The only thing I do want to comment on though, and if you want a list, I can tell you, but there's a few funds, such as the general fund. Right, I've said $724,000, I think you can afford it. If you spent all of this year and received all the revenue like we think, you might end cash at $525,000. If for next year, the circuit breaker stays this year, I think it may drop a little bit. We don't know until they give us those numbers. Your miscellaneous revenues, I always predict them a little bit low, conservative, so that you can plan well for your expenditures to match that. I would never want to overpredict them, and then all of a sudden, they don't come in the same. Your permits maybe are lower next year, and all of a sudden, now you're abiding. So it's a little conservative. The expenses on like you looked at, raises, increase in health, you would end next year's cash at $513,000 if all those things happen exactly like I predict, which, again, we're conservative, so I think it's, so you could drop your cash balance by $13,000 with the current plan, still having over $500,000 cash balance in your general fund. So is it a balanced budget? Not exactly, because your revenues probably are not going to match exactly. We think you might spend a little bit more, but it's funded. You've got the funds to do it, you've got the cash to do it. I would never suggest that your general fund drop much below the $500,000 mark. Remember that the bulk of your revenue, those property taxes, only come in June and December. So you've got to be able to get from December of this year all the way through the end of June next year with your cash on hand to cover your expenses until it's refunded. So the general fund is one where you may dip into your cash a little bit. There's a few other funds like that as well, your MVH possibly. But I'm comfortable, the small dips that this is reflecting are usually only $5,000 or $10,000, maybe $15,000. And so I'm comfortable that you can pass the budget you see and still be in really good shape. The cash balance on the MVH fund, predicted for the end of this year, is at $330,000. So that's, that's still really high, and in fact, more than your annual budget. So you've got more than 100% worth of cash available, covering more than a year's worth of expenses. So that's, that's the reason why I stay uncomfortable in what I presented to you. I'm certainly happy to give you copies of this if you want to see them. In fact, I'll just leave it in Crystal's office, actually, and if you want to come make a copy, you can. If any of the expenses you want to change, you now have some information, as well as with your appropriation report, to look and see if you want to make any adjustments. And so we've got time to talk about that moving over these next couple of weeks.
I was going to say, we need to have one more workshop before we have our September meeting.
At some point, either before or after that September meeting. What I will do for the advertisement, one thing that I don't know that I mentioned last week is, in the general fund specifically, I'm going to plug in a number, probably, I don't know, $100,000, just in a line. What that allows is for us to advertise a budget high, just for the budget, for the advertiser purpose. We need to make sure that when you vote on the ultimate budget at the end of October, that the rate that you're voting on is less than what you have, less than or equal to, equal to or less than what you advertised. We can't ever go higher. So if for some reason, I don't know, because we are budgeting pretty tight to what we think you're going to do, if for some reason healthcare came in at 15%, and we didn't have a little bit of extra in the advertisement, we couldn't increase what you ultimately approved. So it's just a question.
Got it.
If members of your public see an advertised rate in September higher than what they're paying right now, that's okay. It will go down when you vote as we get some of these things tweaked down together. And as we take that plug back out then, once you're settled in to what you want the true budget to be.
So we've not spent anything for roads and streets this year. We've not done any projects.
That's right.
We wanted to encumber those funds for next year.
Then I was headed there next.
Okay.
So in the cash balances that you have, considering where, for example, MPH are restricted, we budgeted for this year, but you're not using it. You do have some cash in the regular MPH fund, $330,000, as you mentioned, but let's set that aside for a moment. In the restricted funds, either in kind of a budget amount or in the cash balance that you have, I think that you can safely spend between $40,000 and $80,000. Likewise, local road and street, again, not spending this year cash blah blah blah. I think you could safely spend between $130,000 and $180,000. Now, it's dipping into your cash balances, but we know that for LRS, you don't need to save it for payroll or other supplies. We're reserving it year to year until your projects.
Yes. Because what we wanted to do is take this year's and move into encumber it this year, move it to next year to do a larger project, like the entirety of Johnson Road, for example.
Which would be fine. And if you look at the fund projection that we talked about last week of the budget, and if you all need another copy, I can run one off, of course. But for example, in LRS, when I said between $130,000 and $180,000, right now, at the end of June, the cash balance is $162,000. If you don't spend any out of it this year, and of course, still earning the revenue the rest of the gas tax that you get this year, you'd have $180,000. So you could have that much just applied toward the project. Then out of your major moves fund, we know that you still have the $29,305 there. So that's giving you a range just on those three funds alone, between $210,000 and $290,000. So if we're looking to do the CCMG as a match grant, and you were to commit up to $290,000, you could be upwards of a million as far as the total project goes. You do also have some cash balances in CETA, CCD, Riverboat, and general fund, but it's nice to keep those cash near emergencies, you don't have a rainy day fund. So you could pull some money if you needed out of one of those. I just am not including that in the number for you today because it would be really nice to conserve that and keep that for your emergencies and wait until your next tax draws come in.
So something else to consider, like you were talking about adding a $100,000 line so we don't go above what we advertise. We still need to solicit bids for refuse, and we don't know what that's going to come in at.
Yeah, we can advertise that high, too. The DLGF won't pay as much attention to that because it doesn't receive any taxes, but we still should follow the same process that we're consistent. So we can do that as well. Regarding then, for these street projects, we can either budget and advertise for that high now, knowing that we'll dip into some cash and that it will be within the values that the DLGF will approve, or once that grant comes in, we simply do the additional appropriation at that time for the value that you know it's going to be. So that's up to you, and you can think about that between now and later.
Trista, can I add a couple, have a question then?
Yes.
An answer to your question on the additional appropriation procedures. You do not have to do that, so it wasn't a reimbursement.
Oh, did you look?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, fantastic.
And then just as a reminder for Dave's sanity, that we're going to have to have a special meeting anyway, so you were saying before or after, if it works, we can-
Do it all together.
Yeah, so there is a special meeting.
I like that idea.
Regardless, that's before the next meeting. I don't know if that makes, puts a crunch on what you have to do, but we have to have a special meeting for leaf collection anyway. So if you're thinking about doing a workshop around that.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
I don't think our next budget workshop's going to be super long, so I think we could probably do that all together.
So we'll at least give you the timing of when, tomorrow I'll be able to do that, and then you guys can schedule what works for you.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Sorry for all the detail, that's quite a bit of detail, but-
It's all good.
Hopefully, you got information now, and you don't have to wonder the rest. It's just kind of different based on revenue, based on how you spend this year's go-bah.
That's a lot of detail. But that's great, that's exactly what we needed.
Yes, thank you very much.
It's been a lot of work.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I know you guys were talking about the tennis court, the ball. You guys might want to think about that as well, when you're looking at these numbers.
I agree.
Because I think something needs to happen over there, even if it's just finishing it or re, however, or what our plan is for that. So in this budget, you might just think about it. You don't have to do anything with it, but I don't know any other major things other than the roads other than that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion questions?
I like her idea, though.
I think it's proof of the law, for sure. Moving on to new business, we have Resolution 4-24 for a resolution to void stale dated checks outstanding and unpaid for a period of two or more years. Do you want to introduce that resolution?
I don't know that I, that's just on, we do have this type of document, and I didn't tell you about that.
So this is resolution number 4-2024, a resolution to void stale dated checks outstanding and unpaid for a period of two or more years, and all matters related there, too. Counsel, if you want to read through the resolution. And this is the state law under IC 5-11-10.5.
So you just need a motion to accept the resolution as presented? I make the motion to accept resolution number 4-2024.
I'll second it. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Any further discussion of questions? Hearing none, opposed, motion carries. We've also got resolution number 5-2024 for the transfer appropriations within the 2024 budget. And then, Crystal, do you have a copy of that, and would you read those off for us?
Okay, so the general fund for the MS4 for $8,000. The decrease of $1,000 for attorney fees, $7,000 for health insurance. The decrease for the general, please, community event.
That's when that was deleted.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I have a different copy. Hope you guys do want, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So we've got a decrease to MS4 quarterly of $8,000.
Yeah.
General attorney professional services increase of $1,000, and general health insurance from 2023 increase of $7,000 for an increase, the general fund of $8,000. The decrease to general park maintenance supplies of $1,350, decrease to general park repairs to equipment of $1,800, the decrease of general park beautification signs of $1,500 for a total of $4,650. An increase of $800 to general park playground supplies, an increase of $3,850 to general park and community events for a total of $4,650. And going forward to the American Rescue Plan Fund, a decrease of $750 to the American Rescue Plan Fund and an increase to the American Rescue Plan of $750. Going forward to the cumulative capital development fund, a decrease of $25,000 to CCD cumulative other capital, an increase of $25,000 to CCD police capital outlay of $25,000. Next page, we've got a decrease of $6,500 to refuse admin part 10, and an increase of refuse repairs to equipment, $6,500 to the garbage fund. So we need a motion to pass resolution 5-2024.
Let me make a motion. Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion of questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing opposed, motion carries. And then we've got the refuse contract next. And I believe that is just a motion to- A motion that we're seeking to seek out bids for the, for a new contract. Since our contract is up at the end of this year, we need to seek out new contractors for 2025 and beyond. So can we have a motion to formally authorize Crystal to advertise and accept bids for refuse contractors?
Make a motion.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Chris, if you would help her with the bid process, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to public comment this evening. Any public comment? None? Any from the three-wheeled emperor? He's awfully quiet there. Any comments from the clerk's office tonight?
No.
No, okay. Any council comments this evening? I, I will speak up and remind everyone that there is a 5K responses center on September 14th, so just a reminder for everyone throughout the town. A reminder that we're going to close some streets down on September 14th that morning. So the traffic patterns may be a little bit different, but just for a little while, similar to what we do for the St. Stan's 5K. So that'll be mostly Steve's department that morning. Hopefully, there'll be a short event. Any other council comments? No, okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll see you in September.